You ready? Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Spokane City Council briefing. And I'm Councilwoman Candace Mum, subbing in for Council President Brian Beggs. And I want to welcome you all. And I turn to Clerk Terry Pfister for the role.
Council President Protam Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
President.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I'm present and I'm having trouble with my camera, so bear with me.
Councilmember Stratton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
President.
Let the record reflect that Council President Beggs and Councilmember Burke are absent.
And now I'd like to welcome Mike Ormsby, our city attorney, to walk us through the briefing for the advanced council agenda for Monday, June 21st.
Thank you, Council President Protam Mum and members of the council. On the administrative session, on the consent agenda, first we have a proposed contract renewal with Itron for meter reading support services. And Lauren Searle from the Water Department is here to present that. Well, Lauren's not here, and I do have some familiarity with this project. Itron has been providing this service to the city as we acquired the meters from them over the last 25 years. And this is an annual regular contract that they provide services to us. And this is an up to award. They come in to help us when we need them. And if anyone has any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. Not seeing any, I'll go to the next item. And it is a proposed award of a low bid for Maple-Wellsley intersection. And Dan Bowler from City Engineering, I hope, is with us.
Good afternoon. Item two is the proposed low bid contract for the Wellsley-Mapple intersection upgrade project with Corridor Contractors of Spokane for $432,547, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project lengthens the westbound to southbound left turn lane, an exhibit for which was included in your briefing paper. The low bid from MMAC was approximately $34,000 or about 7% under the engineer's estimate. One other bid was received. This project is federally and impact fee funded and is planned for construction later this year.
Any questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan. Next is a proposed contract for engineering and remediation, or engineering, and it is for the police firing range. And Jackie McConnell from the Police Department is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, City Council. Oops, sorry, I thought I had my video on. There I am, sorry. So the mine project at the Academy, this is something that we need to do ideally every, somewhere between three and five years. It's been four years since we have done this at the Academy. And in years that we don't mine the berm, we just add sand to it. However, right now, we really need to get the berm mined. And if it doesn't get mined soon, there's actually going to be some other structural impacts, which are going to cost us some extra money. So I was trying to pull up the information for this council session, so forgive me, I'm looking at my briefing paper, it's been a while back, so I believe this is for right about $115,000 for this contract.
It's $112,551.70, Jackie, according to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, I was having trouble pulling up everything for this council session. So thank you, Mike. Any questions on the berm?
Thank you, Jackie. Next, we have some continuum of care grant agreement amendments. And Debbie Cato is here to present these items. Debbie.
Yes, good afternoon, council members. This is a transfer of funding from one permanent supportive housing project of Catholic Community Services, or, excuse me, Catholic Charities, to another permanent supportive housing contract. And it's all supportive services. It's $90,700, just going from one to the other. So are there any questions? Thank you.
And Jackie, oh, okay, excuse me, it's the same amount, but two different contracts. Okay.
That's correct. They're not able to spend the money on one contract, and so they're moving it to another, or they're asking to.
Great. Any other, any questions? Seeing none, I'll go then to item five, which is the council's acceptance on behalf of the city of funding from Waspick for Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority. And Mike McNabb, one of our majors in the Police Department, is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, City Council. This is to accept grant funding award in the amount of $279,377 from the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority. This will be, I think, almost a decade of participating in this program. The original briefing paper said that the funding would allow one officer from Spokane Police Department and one deputy from the Sheriff's Office to participate. However, due to funding restrictions, one of the positions was eliminated, and we're only able to staff the SPD position, not the deputy position. There will also be an accompanying SBO later on in this agenda for this grant acceptance. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have a couple of IT reports from another Mike, Mike Sloan, and Mike has the next two contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Good afternoon, Council President Protam and council members. These two items, typical re-annual renewals. The first one, OPR 0406 is for the renewal for Mitchell-Humphrey. That's for annual maintenance support of the city's financial system. The renewal of the $102,743.40 is less than the 2.99 control number we're trying to do in all of our contracts, so it falls within that constraint, so we're asking for approval for that renewal. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Item 0407, this is a renewal for Acela. This is one of our larger systems. And again, is a renewal, but it's a two-year coverage, and each year falls again within the constraint of, we're trying to manage the, less than the 2.99 control cap. And so again, this is for support and maintenance of the Acela system, primarily for BDS, but other departments use it as well, so we're asking for your approval for that item. Any questions? Great, thank you.
And then, Council, I have the next two items on the agenda. The first is the approval of a proposed interlocal agreement with Spokane County for the relicensing program, which I would tell the council we no longer provide, but the last contract lapsed before the county made its last payment to us. So the accounting departments of both the city and the county would like this contract approved so that we can send an invoice to the county, and then the county can promptly pay us. So we would recommend approval of this interlocal agreement. And then the next item is a proposed three-year extension with Davies Claim Solution, who provides the city's claim management and accident investigative services. They have provided this service to the city for the last six years. It was going to be difficult to do an RFP process in the current COVID environment, so we reached out to Davies to talk with them about renewing the contract for another year. They basically made a proposal to renew it for three years with no price increase for this next year, a 1% price increase for the following year, and limiting it to a 2% price increase the year after that. For the last three years, we've had a 3% price increase every year, so the price is very competitive. And the service we've received from ASC/Davies over the last six years, both Tim Donovan and I have felt very good about it, so we would recommend this approval. Any questions? And I see Sally is here as well, and she was involved in the process, and did a lot of the work, working through this. The next item is proposed contract renewals for garment, linen rental, and laundry services with various vendors. And Sally Stouffer, the Director of the Grants and Contracts Office, is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Council. The Purchasing Department requests approval of the four listed contracts. These are unit priced as needed contracts for laundry and linen services for citywide use. Issuing contracts to all four providers allows for maximum flexibility for city departments while using determined pricing. Any questions on that? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. The next item is going to be presented by our Clerk Terry Pfister, and it's to set a hearing before the City Council on a proposed initiative. Terry.
Yes, and just a correction, there was a clerical error in that the setting of the hearing for June 21st should have been placed on the June 14th agenda, rather than the advanced consent agenda. On June 7, 2021, a representative of the petitioner of Initiative Number 2021-2, Jennifer Thomas, filed with the City Clerk's Office petitions bearing approximately 5,681 signatures. This constitutes 8.17% of 69,529 votes cast at the last general municipal election held November 5, 2019. 5% or 3,477 validated signatures are required for placement on the next general municipal election ballot to be held November 2, 2021. Right now, the signatures have not been validated. Pursuant to SMC 2.02.080 in Sections 84 and 125 of the City Charter, at the hearing on the petition, the City Council determines whether to, one, accept petition and place the measure on the ballot, two, accept petition and direct the city clerk to validate the signatures, or propose an alternative measure. Are there any questions?
Clerk Pfister, I guess I'm wondering if we need to move that to tonight's advanced, or to today's consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, so we need to, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Councilmember Cathcart.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Oh, there's discussion, Mr. Cathcart?
No, I was just gonna say that it could be that Vicki, our county auditor, may have been planning to look at these signatures this week, and so moving it up probably would be beneficial there for her.
All right. Any other comment? All in favor of suspending the rules? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstention, abstaining? All right, now the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to place item 11 on today's consent agenda?
I would so move to place it on today's advanced agenda, or today's agenda.
Consent agenda, yes.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I'll just say that we can make our decision about whether to send it to the clerk or not on the 21st, that's just the time that we'll make that decision. So this is really for the hearing date setting, so. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. So this will now be on our consent agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next, we go to the placeholders for next week's meeting. The first is the report of the mayor for, A, the payment of claims for previously approved obligations, and those blanks will be completed prior to next week's meeting. And then also payroll claims, the same process. And then finally, item 13 is a placeholder for City Council meeting minutes to be approved at next week's meeting. Then we move next to the legislative agenda. And first, we have special budget ordinances, and there is a proposed special budget ordinance for consideration next week dealing with public safety and judicial grant fund. And again, Major McNabb from the Police Department is here to brief this item.
And good afternoon again. This is again, this is just to appropriate the funds awarded by the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority grant that we received for $279,377. Any questions? Thank you.
Then we move to resolutions and final reading ordinances. And the first is a proposed ordinance vacating scenic boulevard, which was discussed last week, and this is tied in with the public hearing that is also scheduled. And so Eldon Brown is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon. Yeah, we had the hearing on this street vacation a little over a month ago, and the applicant's fulfilled the conditions of the vacation. Primarily what they were doing was he had to pay us the money for the vacation and still asked to consolidate the lots adjacent to the roadway, but he really can't do that until the actual road's vacated, because he owns both sides of the road. So we will ask him to actually consolidate the lots prior to issuing a building permit for the one house, which was the original reason for the vacation. So anyway, we're ready for final reading, be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon. And then, we next go to first reading ordinances. And the one recommended ordinance there is one dealing with transportation improvements and the Transportation Benefit District. And Shawna Harshman from Council Staff is with us this afternoon to brief this proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby, member of the council. I do have the same presentation that I briefed council on last week, that I am happy to go over a few PowerPoint slides again, if that is the will of council, or I can just talk through those changes. Any preference?
Talking's good.
Talking's good? Fantastic. So a couple of changes to the Transportation Benefit District are being proposed in ordinance. What really got this rolling was that we have some conflicting resolutions in terms of the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board and the dates of their membership. So in updating that, we found that we had some other opportunities to both clean up the ordinance language, and then really dive in a little bit to make sure that our Transportation Benefit District dollars are being used to the most benefit. And so what we were looking at that is making the largest change, which is moving away from a system where we approve a project list every six years based on the residential street maintenance plan to a performance-based metric, where the Transportation Benefit District will have achieved its goal when 80% of our roads are at a passing pavement condition index, and we have no roads which are failing at below 25 of a pavement condition index, meaning that we can't just fix the top ones and think that that will then raise our average. We've got to fix both ends, so that we're performing really well throughout our entire system. So that was the main change in the Transportation Benefit District ordinance. And then we clarified that the members of the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board will have three-year terms, and that board is being suggested to be expanded to bring in more diverse perspectives, and to increase one member in each council district to two members, as well as bringing in membership onto that board from Spokane Regional Health District and public schools, as well as our Human Rights Commission. Those are the major updates to this ordinance being proposed that we'll brief you on, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you all may have.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Shawna, what's the current length of time a person serves on the board now?
Well, the two competing resolutions on that councilmember Kinnear were that for regular citizens advisory boards from each of the council districts, that was three years. And then if you were representing the Bicycle Advisory Board, or the Pet Committee, or the Plan Commission Transportation Subcommittee, there was a discrepancy between whether that was a one-year term or a three-year term. And so we're proposing to bring that to a three-year term, so that it's the same for all of the members. And it's a fairly technical committee with a pretty high learning curve, and so longevity is one of those important pieces that we're considering on this board.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no other questions, feel free to email me if I can provide any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. And finally, there is a hearing scheduled, and it's on the six-year comprehensive street program, and Kevin Pekenko is here to brief this item.
And sometimes we call him Kevin Marconzo.
Yes. Good afternoon, council members, just bringing up my screen here, you should be seeing that now. So this item is for next week's council hearing, Resolution 2021-052, for review and adoption of our six-year comprehensive street program update for 2022 to 2027. This presentation is essentially identical to what I presented to PIS on May 24th. Again, in terms of the background, sort of why we do what we do, the six-year program is really our mechanism to implement the goals and policies contained within Chapter Four Transportation of the Comprehensive Plan. Once projects are included in an adopted six-year program, we can move forward with identifying and securing full funding for the projects, moving to design, and ultimately implementation within construction. We're required by state law to update our six-year street program annually prior to July 1 of each year. So for this year, I'll drill down in just a second into the specific projects. There are five new projects being added to the program this year, and one project that we're kind of referred to as our honorable mention project, and I'll get to the details on that here in just a second. So first, kind of a city map overview shows you where all these new projects are located, from the north end on Strong to some locations along Division Street for hybrid beacons, protected bike lane project on Boone, a block of Riverside Avenue, the south U District area, and then 44th Avenue to the south. Getting into the specifics on each of these projects, first on 44th Avenue, this is kind of an interesting project. It was next up on our unpaved street program list, and at the same time, was also included on our impact fee program, because it is an identified future arterial. So through a combination of unpaved streets money and impact fee money, we're going to improve this street. We're pulling it out of the unpaved street program because it has that extra impact fee money, and because we're going a little bit farther than our typical strip paving that's done under that unpaved street program work. So this project will include not only the strip paving of the street itself, but front engine improvements along one side of the street, so that we can accommodate pedestrians, you know, with sidewalk, as well as curbing and drainage on one side. It's also a designated bike route, so we'll utilize some of the extra paving that we'll be doing on the whip to stripe bike lanes through this stretch of roadway. Next project is up north on Five Mile. This is Strong Road project from Five Mile Road to Austin. This project is a full reconstruction of this limits of work, including full complete street improvements, so sidewalk, drainage, curbing, and bicycle accommodation through this corridor. Next project is the Boone Avenue Protected Bike Lanes. Limits of work are highlighted here, starting at the west from Howard Street, continuing east to Atlantic, jogging one block north to Sharp Avenue to follow the arterial route over to Ruby Street. The first step or phase of this project will be a comprehensive planning study, to reach out to the affected property owners and businesses along the corridor. And then clearly, there's a need for real significant coordination outreach with the Public Facilities District, and all the entities involved with the various public facilities and putting on special events in that core area, need to consider special event traffic, and how that may be impacted by these improvements, and, you know, identify that as the primary phase, so that the improvements we're proposing, we're comfortable moving forward, you know, with final design and construction. Next project along Division Street is three different locations highlighted here. These are graphics from our grant application. We were successful in applying for and being awarded grant dollars for this project, is the three locations along Division Street, pedestrian hybrid beacons, or otherwise are commonly known as hawk signals. So at three locations, we'll be installing essentially, you know, very similar improvements, hawk signals and pedestrian crossing improvements. First location is, starting from the south, would be a Longfellow. Second location is at Everett Avenue, adjacent to Franklin Park. And the third location is north of Francis at Rhodes Wheel. Next project to Riverside Avenue, just one block of construction. This is a kind of unique project requested by the U District Redevelopment Authority. This is, we have a MOU in place that identifies the funding of the project through the U District. This project will be build complete street improvements, paving, curb gutter, drainage, sidewalk, to complete the road network in this area. Of course, all you are sure are familiar with the area, with the Catalyst Building recently constructed, U District Bridge, we have Sprague Avenue construction continuing this year. This project will build out this grid network. We have the apartment complex being built to the west. This project will only complete this road network area and provide continuity and pedestrian access to the bridge from surrounding property owners and businesses in this area. And then finally, this is the project we identified as honorable mention project, and the reason that we identified it as such, this project was already included in the Transportation Benefit District sidewalk program within our six-year program. It's one of the locations that was listed in the past. We were successful in securing some grants for this project over the past year to two years. So we're going to pull the project out and separate it as its own standalone project, and it won't reside under that TBD sidewalk program. There's still some TBD sidewalk money that's going towards the project as our local match dollars to the grant. So this project will install infill sidewalk along Alberta and Cochran Streets, northwest Boulevard, and then all along Driscoll Boulevard, from Alberta-Cochran up to Garland. Most of this stretch, there's some exceptions of some half-block some half blocks, some blocks here and there, but for the most part, these limits of work are void of any sidewalk today. So it's an important project, and a lot of benefit here is transit routes, the transit stops. You've got Finch Elementary to the west and the park as well. And then one other portion of the scope is inclusion of, or addition of, RRFB and pedestrian crossing improvements at the Milton Northwest Boulevard intersection at southeast corner of Park. Just in terms of summarizing, 11 projects were completed or removed from our program, projects constructed over the past year or currently wrapping up. We've got the five new projects going into the program that I just highlighted, and our total program value for 2022 to 2027 is around 162. Just a sort of summary of all the public outreach that's gone on, multiple touches with Plan Commission, PCTS, City Council itself, leading to our hearing next week on the 21st and adoption of the program. So that's it for this afternoon. Any other questions I can answer?
I have a question, Kevin. With the whole deferral of many, many construction projects because of COVID and the pandemic, were we needing to slide projects into subsequent years? And how are we going to be able to finish them if so?
You know, Dan and Kyle would frankly probably be the best ones to answer that, but from my interaction, obviously, we're closely with them. We haven't had a significant amount of project delays and slippage, I would say. You may be a little bit behind on a few projects, but I think you'll be looking over the next year or so to sort of be catching up where they can. Probably the bigger trigger, frankly, more than COVID even, to some things, you know, being sort of under the gun to kind of be done or completed on time for this year is the I-976 overturn. That kind of put our residential maintenance on hold a little bit, and when that vote was overturned, we're kind of late in the cycle of getting those projects moving. But as of now, they're still on track to get done this year, and going out with a little bit larger program.
Other questions? This is a big plan. You may not have had a chance to dive in, but this is our time to do it. This is our time to dive into the plan, and so if they have questions, should they call you? Because everyone's going to be interested in what's happening in their neighborhoods before we come to final vote.
Yes. Yep. I'm the best contact.
Any other questions here for Kevin? We love streets. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin. Council President Protam Mom and councilmembers, this is the recommended advanced agenda for next week's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Armby. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda for June 21st?
No, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next up, we'll move to the consent agenda, and we've had some discussion about Item Two, which is the consulting contract with HDR to provide future flows forecast to determine future capital facility needs for the update of the water system plan. And Councilmember Wilkerson, do you want to weigh in on this, to take that separately, or possibly amend See if I still have Councilmember Wilkerson with us. And we do have Marlene here as well. Councilmember Wilkerson?
So our discussion was that we wanted to make sure that what the scope of the contract is, is in alignment with our water conservation goals, and the 5% target was seen by some as quite low, and we want to make sure that HDR is given the correct information from council and some of our conservation policies as we move along, because it would be obviously more time-consuming and expensive if we changed it after the fact, after they did their contract. And so we just wanted to have that discussion with Marlene and see if we needed to maybe amend the scope, or also, I also heard that council wanted to be potentially a little more involved in the project team, maybe have a member of the SAS involved in that so there is alignment. And I don't know if Councilmember Wilkerson is available yet. Yes, there she is.
Yes. I thank you, Councilmember Mom, for that. So I was thinking along what that would look like for council, and I think a little bit more education, certainly for me and for the community. So really, what are we trying to accomplish with this and the scope? So I'm going to request a deferral for July 12 for some more input and education on this.
Councilmember Mom, did you want me to jump in at all there?
Yeah, let's do this. I'm going to accept that motion. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I think you muted.
I'm going to accept that motion from Councilmember Wilkerson, and then we'll take a, see if there's a second, and then we'll bring you in, Marlene. How does that sound? Is there a second?
Okay. Second.
All right. Marlene, let's talk.
Yeah, so this particular contract is really around demand forecasting that's required for our water system plan. So this is about the modeling. This is the inputs from all kinds of data from actual water use, and we are going to be looking at that conservation piece. For the water system plan in particular, we have to use current data to do our demand forecasting as required by law. So what we will get into in future conversations, once we start to see the results of our conservation efforts, then we can actually start to embed that into our demand forecasting. So what HDR is going to be doing is they're going to be making recommendations based on their modeling where they see that we can find future water savings. And remember, this couples with another contract that we actually have the council president, and I'm not sure who else might have been on the selection committee for that. So that is the, really, that outreach piece and the selection of projects for our 20 and 50-year outlooks for our water system. So this is the modeling piece, and it takes in all the inputs that we can. And if we're able to achieve greater water savings, then we can start to build that into our models. And the other piece is really the much more detailed piece on what's important to us as a community and how we're going to select projects, which council will be very much involved with, to determine our priorities. So if our priorities, Councilmember Wilkerson, are around water savings, then those are the things that we would elevate in that discussion as we set our decision matrix. So think of the HDR study as really the model to show us where we're headed and what we might see in terms of future use, and then we're going to use this other process to be able to set our decision-making analysis, so the MODA, Method of Decision Analysis, that sets our priorities as a community and we select projects from. So these are pieces that come together. We need to know what we think, where we're headed to be able to make different choices about where we want to go. So the demand forecast model helps us do that. So certainly, we can have further discussions. Catherine is the expert on this, and she's out today. But I just wanted you to know that, yes, water conservation is a huge piece of this, and we have to start to embed those things into our everyday lives so that we can use it to make different decisions going forward.
Do you have any heartburn over us taking a couple weeks and just adding in a little more council input on that?
No, I think we can certainly take a look at that. I think that this scope in particular is much more of a mathematical analysis. I think where you're going to get your much bigger bang for your buck is in the second contract that we're going to be bringing forward, that the council president was involved in the selection committee. So this is really much more of the mathematical formulas that we use to help see where the demand is coming from, and when, and why. But we certainly can take another look at that piece and have Catherine get back with, you know, if there's a way to address what the council is considering here.
Great. Council discussion.
Go for it, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. This is the first I've heard of any concerns about this. I'm happy to support a deferral. That's the problem. But would love, if we're going to bring this back for some changes, it'd be great to have some more conversation around what those changes mean. It kind of sounds like maybe we're talking about manipulating some models, but then maybe not. So I'm trying to just get a better sense of what you guys are concerned about. So happy to have those conversations up.
Great. Any other discussion? Councilmember Kinnear.
Marlene, that makes sense to a point, but I'm wondering if, even if it's a mathematical exercise in the modeling, how do we craft that without knowing where we want to go? So in other words, if we don't set goals for conservation in the very beginning, how did they, regardless of what our habits are, what our patterns are, how are they able to determine that this is where we want to go?
Yeah. So if you look at Task Four in the scope of work, we're actually asking HDR to prepare an analysis of water conservation savings potentials. So we're going to ask them to look at our raw data, our historical trends, our use of, you know, what our climate is hinting at, and then to take all the possible measures that we could use and build those, basically build us a second track on how we can start to measure those things. And if we're able to then achieve those, we can use them in our long-term planning. So there is an entire task around water conservation savings in this five-task contract. And remember, this is a contract for $200,000, really to do that mathematical modeling. And then we're able to say, if this is successful, what does that mean? What does the model look like? What does the demand forecast look like? So they'll create a model that's fluid, that we'll be able to use to put in different scenarios as we make changes and as we implement and encourage our community to make different choices around water use.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stratton?
So I'm just asking a basic question. So given that explanation from Marlene, why are we going to hold this off for two weeks?
So the other information to add in is while the conservation methodology for cost is one, there's also ecological and environmental impacts that we might want to look at and just have it in the scope, because if they're, if it's just narrowed to that. So the request is just to add a little more into the scope of the contract with HDR, so it's aligned with our conservation goals and what the council is looking at in terms of water policy. It's not a big change, just a few things.
So Marlene, can we do that? Well, it hasn't been approved yet, so is there a problem adding anything to the scope?
It just would be, you know, cost, whatever the cost would be, right? So we have a certain budgeted amount for this contract, so we would have to look at whether that adds dollars, depending on the scope addition. I do think if you look at Task Four, though, you will find it pretty robust in terms of conservation and building that into our ability to measure how projects and how choices will make a difference going forward. I actually think that what we're looking at really is actually better addressed in our decision-making criteria rather than in the model itself. The model can be flexible based on the inputs that we put in, but determining what our goals and our objectives are really happens in that other phase, which is absolutely where we need the policy-level influence. So that is the second contract coming forward that will happen in a few weeks, I believe.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Marlene, thank you for all that, and I'll be blatantly honest, since this is my real first exposure to all this, and some of my fellow council members, your eyes were crossed as Marlene was going through some of her explanations. And it's like, for this, I would really like a little bit more understanding, and that may be pulling me aside or another meeting, to give us kind of a good grounding, and really what we're trying to get and how the sustainability, water conservation kind of all comes to play. Because there was a lot of moving parts, and your hands were moving with all the moving parts, Marlene. And it's like, wow, like, okay, I'm trying to get to the intersection of all this. And so not that it's any wrong contract, I think we could stand a little bit more education around this before we move forward. If it's not going to, you know, like, stop everything, I think 30 days is not a reasonable time, especially over the holiday weekend coming forward to get this done.
Well, Councilmember, you know, we do have the PIES meeting coming up, so we could plan a briefing perhaps on how all those pieces come together in our water planning so that you have the big scope. And then if you still think that there is need for tweaks to this particular contract, we could build that in prior to the July 12 date that you're suggesting.
Thank you for that offer.
Great. Any other deliberations, council? Otherwise, we'll call for the vote to defer. All right. All in favor of the deferral?
I'm going to say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll defer that to July 12. Thank you very much. So now we have the consent agenda, and Ms. Fister?
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, one-year extension. Number two of three of water supply agreement with the City of Airway Heights through June 15, 2022. Item number two has been deferred to July 12, 2021 agenda. Number three, low bid awards of A National Native...
We lost her.
Yeah, Terry's muted.
We're back.
Okay. I'll start over. Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, one-year extension. Number two of three of water supply agreement with the City of Airway Heights through June 15, 2022. Item number two has been deferred to July 12, 2021 agenda. Number three, low bid awards of A National Native American Construction Incorporated for CSO 63841 piping modification, $97,790, and administrative reserve of $9,797.90, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. B Shamrock Paving Incorporated Spokane for the 2021 Residential Chip Seal Project, $1,325,325, and administrative reserve of $132,532.50, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Number four, contract with Better Health Together to provide emergency housing and utility assistance to eligible individuals, $2 million. Number five, recommendation to list the Eastman Heritage House, 1214 South Cook Street on the Spokane Register of Historic Places. Number six, contract amendment with Northwest Industrial Services LLC Spokane Valley to increase the scope of the existing contract and to allow for debris transport and dumping at a contractor site where disposal will occur not to exceed $170,500. Total contract amount, $220,500. Number seven, contracts with Intermountain Slurry Seal Reno, Nevada to perform A arterial micro overlay work on Bernard Street, $89,796.80. B 2021 micro overlay work on the residential roadways, $190,238.50. This is an amendment to the above arterial micro overlay contract. Item number eight, contract with Dundee Concrete and Landscaping LLC MEED to remove and replace the old media for the biofilter at the water reclamation facility, $116,120 plus applicable taxes. Number nine, agreement with coming sales and service rent in Washington for generator plan maintenance service from April 15, 2021 through April 14, 2026, utilizing Washington State Master Contract Number 02420, estimated cost of $211,000 plus applicable taxes over five years. Number 10, contract with Inland Environmental Resources Incorporated Spokane to supply liquid magnesium hydroxide to Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026, $2,600,000 plus applicable taxes per year over five years. Number 11, report to the mayor of pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through June 4, 2021. Total $6,416,014.76 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $5,127,824.84. Number 12, city council meeting minutes for May 24 and June 3, 2021. Item number 13, set hearing before city council for Monday, June 21, 2021, on proposed initiative number 2021-2 petition signatures filed on behalf of Senator Thomas Petitioner regarding charter amendment adopting the Spokane Cleaner Energy Protection Act.
All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Consent agenda passes. We are now done with our briefing, and I believe our next meeting will be at 6:00 PM tonight. We have a salutation by Councilmember Wilkerson. Cathcart, and proclamations by Councilmembers Stratton, Burke, and Wilkerson, and a neighborhood report from Audubon Downriver. So we will see you all at 6:00 PM.